What? Are you ready?
Yes.
Jenny, can you please take the roll? Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Councilmember Schwer?
Here.
Councilmember Nordby?
Here.
Mayor Mongi is absent and Acting Mayor Wang.
Here. All right, so I'm looking to adopt the agenda, but we've had a request to switch topics A and B. Do we have a motion for that?
So moved. Your Honor.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those that oppose? All right, the motion carries. All right, turn it over to City Manager. Workshop.
Bob's here to talk, so.
We're gonna do that second.
That's the one we flipped around, excuse me. So first up would be the sidewalk encroachment ordinance, AKA sidewalk cafes. I'll turn that over to Brandy, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Acting Mayor and Council.
Welcome, Brandy.
Make all this technology work for me. Fantastic. Okay, so on your agenda tonight is a draft ordinance for your consideration and policy direction on whether this is something we want to pursue as a council, and if so, how do we want the ordinance to look in terms of regulation? So because we have some new council members on, we wanted to give you a little bit of background. The, under the state's COVID emergency, you may have noticed that there was some downtown outdoor seating that was occurring in 2020, 2021, and then once that state of emergency was lifted, that exception to allow that outdoor seating was no longer permitted. But there's a lot of interest still with the local businesses, and so they've been speaking to the former mayor and kind of has stricled down to staff, and so we've been looking at it to try to determine what is the best approach if we're going to move forward with an outdoor seating ordinance. So we looked at a number of cities, mostly in Minnesota, some in Iowa as well, and found that generally it's done by either license or permit annually, and then there's a variety of fees, the lowest being 25 and the highest. I actually looked at Madison, too, and the fees and the regulations there were exorbitant, so I kind of whittled it back down to just Iowa and Minnesota. But the highest fee in this group was 200 bucks annually, and that was in Dubuque. And out of those different cities, a different, a number of types of regulations were included, such as where furnishings could be located, pedestrian clearance, meaning the width of the walkway to make sure that people can pass, time limit, you cannot have the outdoor seating area from November 1st to April 1st, March 31st, rather. Some of them required an enclosure, some of them required a liquor license, well, they would all require a liquor license if you're gonna serve alcohol. Some of them chose not to, and then there would be no smoking for some. Pretty much all of them, except for one, I believe, had a no smoking requirement, and then also liability insurance. So other regulations included that it had to be adjacent to the applicant's business. It could be either next to the building or the curb, and as far as clearance, all of the ordinances that it looked at required either four to five feet for pedestrians and also clearance for any public infrastructure, like streetlights and street trees, utility type infrastructure. And then just a note for your information, the ADA requires a minimum of three feet as a passing zone with an additional 200 feet every, oh, sorry, a passing zone every 200 feet. So as it relates to enclosures, those were typically only required if alcohol was gonna be served, but it wasn't required in all cities. It can be used to separate the sidewalk cafe from the street or the parking area. This image on the screen kind of depicts like a planter box and some of those chain ropes that are kind of delineating where the seating belongs and where the street begins to kind of put some protection between the pedestrians and the vehicle traffic. They also included a regulation that said it must be removable portable fencing or a planter, so if you're gonna put it out there, you gotta be able to move it at the end of your permit. So then we looked at the downtown revitalization plan, different than the redevelopment master plan, I got those confused when I first came. So this plan was the predecessor to the Seventh Avenue Street Reconstruction Project, so this is the design work that went into that, and what that design was, would allow for a sidewalk width of 16 feet, which is typical, sometimes it's bigger than that, so that would be like the most narrow sidewalk area, and of that 16 feet, seven and a half feet has been designed specifically as a pedestrian zone that meets ADA requirements in terms of slope and other ADA requirements, and then the additional eight and a half feet was purposefully meant as the amenity or utility zone. And so if you look at the little image on the bottom right, that's the area that's designed closest to the street, and they had included this as a kind of a little graphic of how it could operate, so the little boxed areas are planters, your seating, and then another planter with an additional six feet of right of way. So our recommendations, and these are just, you know, first crack at what we could do, are included in the draft ordinance. So we're suggesting an annual permit between, well, this has been modified as of today, May 1st to October 31st. The ordinance actually says April 1st, but we had a discussion this afternoon that kind of changed our mind to May 1st. It must be reviewed and approved by a designated city manager, so if somebody came in for a sidewalk permit, it would be handled by staff and not by city council. A site plan would be required. We would collect an application fee, just threw $25 in there as the minimum that it would take for us to do that preliminary review and to determine whether or not it meets the requirements. It would include revocation of permit for any violations, an appeal process if we denied the permit, so that goes, that includes all the administrative policies. The general requirements, we're suggesting that the pedestrian zone be six feet, which is a lot more generous, or sorry, it's, yeah, it is, it's a lot more generous than the four to five feet that the other cities have, but it's a little bit more restrictive for the permit holders. It's in compliance with ADA, liability insurance would be required. If you wanted to serve alcohol, you would have to do it with an appropriate license, and that would be done by a separate process, so if they wanted to modify their existing liquor license, they would have to go to the typical process of that, which would require city council approval.
That's the boundaries, right? Just the defined area that alcohol is served in?
I don't think that we're talking about the same thing. We can circle back to that. So the layout, where possible, would be required in the amenity zone. We're not requiring it. The requirement would be that you have to leave six feet for pedestrian traffic. If your sidewalk layout is such that it just doesn't make sense for that to, for the placement, then we could potentially do a one-off and say, okay, you can have it close to the building as opposed to close to the parking area, but it would be site-specific. But we wanted to leave that flexibility in case there's a situation that would require it. So if it was going to be adjacent to the parking or the curb, then we would require a barrier, like the planter that we looked at before. And then as far as furnishings go, they must be commercial-grade, movable, weather-resistant, and suggested that they be locked at the end of the business day. Also, they should be stacked and organized at the end of the business day, and area must be kept in a clean and sanitary condition. And some of the other cities had outdoor heaters, and so that's included in your ordinance, something to consider. If you were gonna keep that in there, the heating equipment must comply with fire code regulations, but since we're modifying the time, time that these are gonna be allowed, heating may not be logical from May to October, so something to consider. So the way the ordinance is drafted right now, we have, it's basically a sidewalk encroachment permit that you would be applying for, so that would apply to sidewalk cafes like we just described. Sidewalk sales would be another use for sidewalk encroachment and then other fixtures. So for sidewalk sales, they still have to maintain the six-foot pedestrian zone. They can put merchandise in front of their, in front of the building as long as they maintain, you know, that six feet. There's a seven and a half feet, if you recall, according to that, the design by WSB, and the merchandise can't block entrances or exits. So other fixtures, I just kind of left that flexible. As you can see, there's public art there, there could be other fixtures like bicycle racks, anything that a business would want to have of their own located in the public right of way. So that would, you know, the project's noise statues would be included in there. So the time limit, this is something the city attorney review came up with. We should have an exception for the project's noise, so anything that's intended to be kept there year-round, we should have an exception for them. So optional requirements that we have not included, but we could, would be the delineation of the alcohol area or seating area, so a continuous barrier made of fencing or planters. They must be compact and contiguous with the enclosed portion of the licensed premise, something to consider, and also no smoking. So the last time we looked at this was back in September, and I believe Commissioner Cole had requested review by the police chief and also the car show. So we talked to the car show this morning or this afternoon, and we also talked to the police chief and the public works director, and then last week I had a quick conversation with the city's insurance agents and then the city attorney, who's expressed his concern with liability. So all of the items that have been brought up by these entities have been included in this presentation, but not necessarily reflected in the draft ordinance. So those include, so we made the change from May to October versus April to October. The city insurance agent suggested that a risk transfer agreement's gonna be needed that lists the city as an additional insured under the permit holder, holder's insurance, and I believe Bob's here to speak on his own behalf, but my understanding from our conversation this morning was that he wasn't necessarily concerned with the proposal, but suggests that we have, in the early days, that this is in effect, that we have the police on the ground to make sure that everybody's in full understanding of what the rules are and that kind of get them up and going. And that is all, so I'm gonna open it up to discussion. I'll sit back down or stand up here, whatever you prefer.
Thank you. Any questions for Brandy? Councilmember Cole?
I've got a couple. I may have skimmed through it and missed it. Was there anything in there about the bar owner's responsibility for storage of tables and chairs during the winter months?
There is not, but that is a good comment about potential modification.
Just concerned. The other area was referencing the barriers around it. We met with bar owners last Wednesday. It was the mayor, police chief, Brian and myself were there, and one of the things they were asking for is what do these barriers look like? They expressed a desire, if this is go-forward with the city, they would like them all to look the same, which I think was our overall conversation from the beginning, and I know that was one of the areas to work on in there. So just if we, kind of similar to the commercial-grade furniture that we set forth, did we put any barriers together, what the barrier would look like when we approved?
No, I don't think so.
Tables and chairs, okay. Because that was one thing they were asking for. That was it for me, I'm easy.
Yeah, we can amend the policy.
Okay.
And I can make a change to indicate that the bar owners are responsible, or any permit holder is responsible for storing non-permanent objects.
And then do you put the wild card in there in the event of snow it ends?
Is there any other comments?
I have several. And along with Tim, would it be possible, rather than to say October 1st, because I know some years it's beautiful out and we suspend parking, would it be to say this is allowable until the city enacts their winter parking rules? Because we've suspended it before till mid-November because it's beautiful out, and this would put the onus on the city of when we start our winter parking rules, and sometimes that's mid-November.
Okay, so I'm not sure what the parking rules are, but maybe.
You had said October 1st.
Right.
Oh, well, you can't park on the streets overnight, usually starting November 1st in the city.
Well, the permit has, as it is listed, it would end October 31st, so it kind of aligns with what you're suggesting.
Right, but if it was a beautiful November and bars are making money, would it be advisable to allow these people to do it a little bit longer if it's a beautiful November and put that end it along with?
Another alternative would be when the first snow flies, you're over, but that could, that could not go well as well.
The second question I have is, commercial grade for furniture is more of a marketing ploy as far as I'm concerned. I don't know that there's a legal standard there. So I think we should run that past the city attorney of, with no legal standard for what you can market as commercial grade. I don't know that that's a standard we can set forth of who's marketed their furniture as commercial grade and who hasn't.
I believe the furniture requirements have already been printed and passed by council.
That's kind of a.
I know they were presented.
Yeah, that's more a policy and not regulatory, so I hear what you're saying, and I'm not entirely sure what the answer is right now, but it's something that we could definitely bring it up to Soren and see if the wording is such that maybe commercial grade as.
That conversation predates you, too, so.
Wouldn't be a liability to the business owner if they had the plastic flexible furniture?
I'm not sure.
Wouldn't say it's flexible, but it would be something you would use on your patio itself. You can buy it at a local retailer. It's, it moves along with you, it can break easily.
That was kind of the purpose of having the commercial-grade language, because we want to ensure that it's gonna be heavy enough to be weather-resistant and also appropriate enough for the aesthetics of the downtown.
That's how I read it. I wasn't, I was going off of council member. Sorry, geez.
Oh, good.
Councilmember Jason. That's how I was trying to define it on that end. You don't want to purchase something that's flexible, I should say, where commercial grade is a little bit heavier metals.
Okay.
And/or plastic.
Right, and I believe that's the intent, and I agree with that intent, but I don't know that commercial grade is more than a marketing standard. I don't believe there's any legal standard there for them to market their product as commercial grade.
Sure.
Yeah, these are good points and definitely something that we can research and try to determine what the best language is.
And then my last question was, is it only non-smoking then if they serve food?
Well, that's, that's up to the council to decide.
The way it was written, I believe that last slide said no smoking in compliance with the Food and Beverage Association or?
Minnesota Clean Indoor Air Act. That's a policy recommendation, but we can really form this ordinance in any way that you see appropriate. Sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
At the moment, there's no, there's no regulation in the draft for non-smoking, so if that's something that you want added, I'm gonna need to make that modification.
Does anyone have?
Yes. I do, I have another question. The definition of revocation is pretty strict. Would you, would this ordinance provide any warning notification, a fine before revocation and then revocation of the permit?
Again, this is a policy decision for council, so if it's something that we're very concerned about liability, we want to, you know, bring it down quickly, but if we want to have a little bit more flexibility in getting people up to speed on how we operate under this new permitting process, then I think a warning or discussion or whatever the preliminary first step and second step might be. So that is another one that we could take a look at.
I think the intent was to look at up to revocation, but you're right, suspension or, you know, discussions can count for a lot when you have issues.
And I guess the biggest, another concern, I don't know if you'd say so much a concern, but for the businesses downtown, especially during the car show, could they, or would we allow paying customer signs only for seating?
Well, I would imagine, so you're suggesting that the permit holder would want to add their own sign that says the seating is only for paying customers. I mean, we could have that. They could just add that as part of their permit process, and it doesn't necessarily need to be addressed in the ordinance, because it could just be a piece of their site plan furniture.
Okay.
That they could approve. Did you want to?
Just a quick input on the, you know, consequences if they do something wrong. I think you gotta look at that case by case, because if Tim wanders out of the fenced area with his beer, we ain't gonna pull your license. Come on, guys, you know, but if there's an altercation or something like that, yeah, there's ways you gotta deal with it, but you gotta give and take, you know, we all, everybody's new, but we had this in 2020, and it worked really well. First couple of weeks, we had issues with people wandering the street. We had a meeting with the bar owners, and the bar owners in this town want things to work right. They got on it, it was the end of the story. You know, they were very good, people learned, and the first two weeks of the car show will be the toughest, because people are gonna see things and, oh, yeah, and they're gonna forget they got a beer and down the street they go. Okay, we ask them where it come out of, and somebody goes, talks to Mike at Newman's or Rodney, go, hey, watch your people closer. But no, I think you gotta, if there's a problem, you gotta do it case by case. Just can't pull their permit. My take on it.
Thank you, Bob. Anything else?
No, like I said, I'm, we're for, we had a meeting today, and it worked good last time. They just need a little more uniformity, because during the call, but it was kind of random.
Thank you.
As far as, just to add on what Bob is suggesting, having some kind of delineation, like, I'll go back to that image. The, I don't even know what you call this, the bollard with the chains, it's not gonna keep anybody from, like, that really wants to get out, but it's implied, this is where you are if you're in this area, and if you're gonna have a meal or a beer, this is, this is the seating area, and it's not for you to get up and move around. But as it's written, it's not a requirement, so I'm looking for your thoughts on that, too.
My understanding of the way things work is, for a bar to serve liquor in this area, they would have to ask for an amendment to their liquor license, and then at that point in time, the city would say, in order for us to grant this, you need to have barriers, and those stipulations would come with the granting of the liquor license amendment. Is that correct?
Correct, and along with proof of insurance for the expanded area as well, yes.
So in your opinion, strict liquor rules don't need to be in this ordinance, because they would be part of the liquor license itself, correct?
That's my understanding. I don't recall the question about the barrier. I know that we talked about that last summer.
It was, it was my understanding that one of the reasons, one of the things that would be the delay is that each bar owner has to identify where liquor is served, and currently it's basically within the confined four walls of their existence, so in order for the city to approve the liquor license, it has to extend onto the area of the sidewalk. And I think that's a state thing, not a city thing, but I am by far not the expert.
From the bar industry, I believe it's state guidelines, but still approved by the city.
Yeah, we can, I can go back and get verification on the enclosure question. I know that for, maybe if I talk through it, it will come back to me. The amendment that we worked on over the summer was to eliminate the fence requirement on private property if you're going to have an outdoor beer garden on your own property, not on the public right of way. And so at that time, we needed a six-foot fence, so we eliminated that.
Thought we moved it to three.
I think we just, maybe? If we put a pin in that, I can do some research.
Because we did it to accommodate max. I remember the reason, I don't remember the outcome.
Oh, it looks like there's a three-foot.
I'm half there.
What would be another word for delineation?
Too many syllables for me.
We say demarcation.
Markation? I will find it as soon as I'm not on the spotlight.
I believe, too, the way the area that we looked at would bend the width of whatever their business is out to the roads, not to expand outside of.
Correct.
Those imaginary lines, yeah.
The legal requirements of the state aside, and also the requirements of the license, liquor license ordinance, assuming that neither of those require an enclosure, how do we feel about the enclosure? And then if we decide that we don't need it, I'll just make sure that we can do that, or if we must have it, then I'll make sure that whatever we come up with this group is in alignment with those state and local requirements. Any thoughts? Yeah, Councilmember Cole?
I'm of the belief that, Bob's got his hand up, too, I'm of the belief we need to do something to define the space.
Because otherwise, let's say Rodney's bar has seating for eight people, and all of a sudden there's 10 chairs, and now there's 12 chairs. I'm with this group at Rodney's Bar drinking, I'm the 12th chair. Now I'm all the way down, you know, past the bookstore. I think there's gotta be some designated area for each bar, otherwise, what's to stop somebody from setting their chair next to the buddy and getting a beer, and first thing we got all the way down the street.
Yeah, so I'm of, I'm of the opinion that we need to do something. I'm also of the opinion that whatever it is needs to be consistent across all bar owners, so that if you're bar hopping, you get it. I would like to see something more permanent than whatever you call them with the chains in between them. I've seen planters, I've seen more solid barriers in other areas, Stillwater, White Bear, but yet something that still remains decorative and ties in with the look that we want Nurse Paul to have.
Are there any comments to that?
So for clarification, is this, I mean, we're talking about the details of the ordinance, but just to clarify, this is something that we wanna move forward with as a, as a regulation? Or as a permitting option? Okay. So if there are no other comments, would you like me to read through what I think I heard? Okay, I'll do it. Okay, so the, the barriers, they need to be, there should be a barrier, it has to be, the space must be defined, but it can't be bollards and chains. It's gotta be a little bit more decorative, such as a planter. The revocation process needs to have some steps, some warning steps, perhaps some warning, suspension, no smoking on, outside? I don't know if we came to a, yes, okay. Commercial grade, we'll figure out if there's better language than commercial grade. Make an exception for warm weather. If, if there's no snow by November 1st, you can just keep it out there till November 15th, perhaps? The permit holder must be responsible for storage of all permitted items. And all barriers across the downtown should be the same or similar? The same is kinda?
Or, whatever. I'm sure we've got a guideline someplace. I'm looking to you, Lisa. There's, there's something out there, I think.
Probably the design review.
Right.
I would probably think similar. I think trying to get the same may be difficult, supply chain issues and, I don't know, maybe costs may be prohibitive to some businesses versus others.
Our owners are already expressing concern with table and chairs, that supply chain has made it difficult for them to find some things already, so.
Okay. Well, I'll move forward with that and I would imagine you'd wanna see that at the next agenda if we have the ability to have a city attorney review it.
Can I make one last comment?
Yes.
For the smoking thing, I was more, wanted to just make sure we're in line with state guidelines, but I don't think we should be more strict than state. Let's say a tobacco shop comes in and they wanna set up a table outside and allow their patrons to sample their tobacco. I don't know that we should exclude that by this ordinance, which I believe would be currently acceptable under state guidelines. I just wanted to make sure that we were gonna be in line with the standards of the Indoor Clean Air Act with, if there's gonna be food service.
Yes, from my perspective, it's a kind of a public health issue. If we've got, you know, a bunch of people crowded around for the car show, I mean, you've got kids and people walking by, some people don't wanna smell smoke when they eat, and that, that just carries, so that's just kinda my thought around it.
I'm aligned with active mem, active mayor Wong. It, it, it's tough where you draw the line. As of right now, the only interested people who've expressed the desire is that of bar owners, recognizing this needs to extend beyond that to any other shop owner. I, I, yeah. It, it makes it a slippery slope.
Well.
There's nothing stopping them from displaying their product. There would be things that would stop them from sampling, is that?
Okay, I'm, I'm hearing a couple of things. So the displaying of the products, so for example, the bookstore has a display and she currently doesn't have to get a permit for it. So if we put this in place as written, she would then be required to put, to pull a permit to use the sidewalk to put her books out there, or anybody else that might be doing that over the summer. So if we wanted to make it easier for, for retailers, we could pull that requirement. In terms of the tobacco shop, I'm, I'm not following this completely, so we... It sounds like we wanna keep it, keep it clear for, for families, but we also don't wanna limit the ability of retailers to, to, to use the outdoors to, I'm not entirely sure where to go with that one.
Newman's, do they allow smoking in their open area? They do?
That's their designated area. Is their patio.
But does it change being in the public right of way that we're allowing? We would have control over that?
Yeah, we could.
At the moment, people who go outside the bar until right now and smoke on the sidewalk, is that correct?
Yes.
And you see them gathered, whether it's right or wrong, I'm not sure.
That's true, somebody could just stand up and stand outside of where their seat is.
So...
Well, I ain't gonna.
Say no, then that's gonna stop the people that do step out of the bars that have been smoking on the sidewalk for how long? Yeah, I...
On sidewalk and in designated areas, I view as two separate areas. I guess I might look up and see why Stillwater and White Bear, if they have anything.
I don't think either of those communities have this sidewalk encroachment. They at least don't have sidewalk cafes as an ordinance on the public right of way. So I'm not sure if their ordinance is gonna address smoking, but I can take a, take a look.
Any other thoughts?
Yes.
I, we have time. I only have one more thought. And that has to do with the serving of the alcohol in the designated area if it's not attached to the building. If a patron walks out of the building and walks this five feet, that's, I would assume to be open container violation until they got into the designated area.
That's a question I would need to run by Sorin, I think.
So that, that would, I would, I would wanna get some guidance from Sorin on, on that. I mean, the, the workaround is they just have to have a server that, that serves that area, that carries the beer from the door to the, to the barriers.
Yeah. I think I'm gonna need some guidance on that, because I'm, I'm pretty sure that Sorin did consider that issue last summer, when I was at WSB and I no longer have his response to that.
Because otherwise, how are you gonna stop the individual from just standing outside the door on technically the sidewalk and drinking a beer?
Yeah.
Seems like we had those discussions early on, a couple of years ago, that that's the way it was worded then, that their patrons would, or they would serve the patrons in that area. But we can double check.
So the question is, is a server required for the open container consideration? Okay, I think I got it. Okay, so I believe that we want to go ahead with this and I think I have my list of items to, to review and revise. So we'll, if we can, we'll bring it back the next meeting, so the owners can get moving with their purchases. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Real quick, we had, just, this, this is more for you, Bob, than anything else. The bar owners definitely recognize the car show as a tremendous asset to the city and they want to make sure that the car, that the car show is happy going forward. So I, I appreciate you coming in and, and sharing the opinion of, of you and, and also of, you know, the other, the other members of the car show, so thank you.
Well, yeah, well, I know you were involved in the meeting a couple of years ago, when we did have that. And like I said, we brought it up and banned it and over.
Yeah.
They police their areas and we banned the store. And I said, we're, I know this has become the trend to have an outside act.
Yeah.
That's all fine with us, you know? We know that there's gonna be some issues, there always is. And we'll never stop the alcohol on the streets, the people bringing their cars and driving the streets, but it is what it is.
Yeah.
It all works.
And the other thing, if they haven't reached out to you, someone will be. They wanna make sure that you've got adequate volunteers. They've recognized that, that the volunteers have been tough over the last few years and the bar owners wanna do everything they can to help the car show solicit volunteers to, to help during, during the time period.
We're studying very good now, especially now this year, construction really happens, we're gonna have funding, because we lose two corners of where our people are at. So I have enough, but I know, like I said, the city, the city and council and businesses have been just terrific. I mean, I will see Tracy, hey, Tracy, yeah, what do you need? Four walls. I mean, everybody's been, we've been in the bars, I've been in America, I mean, Mike at Newman's, hey, you need something? Speak up. No, we all work good together.
Good.
And, and we've seen people come out with Newman's and I with Mike, I'm not the police, but, you know, that guy got a drink here, that's your problem, and he, he gets after it. No, everybody's good. We have no complaints with anybody here. And like I told Ryan, our maintenance people do a terrific job of helping with the car show, putting out barrels, cleaning up the mess. They store our trailer, I work good with them, it's, it's just a good deal. Gets a little long sometimes.
Thanks, Bob. Any other last comments?
Okay. So the next item is the MPCA Electric Vehicle Charging Station Grant Opportunity. Okay, this is something that came to my attention in December and it's funding from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency for Level Two EV Charging Stations. They have $644,000 to install about 88 of these through this grant. The funding is coming from the 2016 settlement against VW for violation of the Clean, Clean Air Act. So the purpose of the grant is to increase the use of electric vehicles and reduce tailpipe emissions in the state. So they're, they're seeking eligible applicants to install these stations wherever we, we can. Eligibility requirements, municipalities are eligible applicants. The stations that would be installed have to between, have to be between 6.6 would be the minimum and up to 19.2 kilowatts. And they must be accessible for 24 hours a day, seven days a week, a minimum of 350 days of a year. So that would leave open, if you needed to do some maintenance on wherever they're installed, there's some flexibility with that. So within an area where the EV station would be installed, the first of however many you would be placing has to be ADA accessible. And that, in order to receive a grant, you have to have at least two, two of these stations at each location that you would put them. So the maximum award for, per application would be 150,000. So that would be 10 dual-port stations, the equivalent, and so what's on the, on the screen there is what a dual-port is. That's what's actually outside here at City Hall, is one of these charge point dual-ports. So that would be, the award would be 7,500 for one port or 15,000 for a dual-port. That would be the maximum for those types of stations. So that would not be just the, so if, if a station is 15,000, but we need to actually include costs, you know, for extending service to the area, we would have to find some money, some more money for those additional costs. And so the match requires 20%. So for one dual-port, that'd be $3,000, or two single-port stations. So the eligible costs would be the stations, the new conduit, any required signage, the bollards, cable wiring, electrical service box disconnects, any concrete or asphalt that would need to be added or replaced, striping of parking stalls, the EV parking signs, EV parking only signs and their installation, any permitting costs, charging station installation, labor, warranties and maintenance costs for up to five years, and activation and configuration of the station. So they have a, a number of points for evaluating who's gonna be eligible for these awards. And so the higher the charging capacity of the station gets greater, greater points. Whether or not you're in an environmental justice area or vulnerable populations, you would get more points. And they use, they have a mapping program that they provide and you, you can see here that we, the entire city fits within that. The area to the north, east, has the highest, would get the highest points for that. Targeted groups or small businesses would also get points. We don't, we don't have the ability to, to be that. If you're powering it through renewables, you have additional points there. And if there's other stations within five miles, you get fewer points. So because we have a station here in City Hall, that might ding us a little bit. So we had some internal conversations about where these might go. So the parking lot that's kind of across from City Hall on Sepulveda Avenue might be one, and then potentially the community center parking lot. And so with that, we're looking for guidance on whether this is something that you would like us to pursue. And I'll take any questions. Hopefully, I can answer them.
Thank you. Any questions for Brandy? Thoughts? Yeah, Jason.
This should be a twofold approach. One is not only for us to approach it as a city, but two, to get the information out to our local businesses, so they could possibly put in for this as well. The local target and stuff like that, would they be eligible and can we get them that information?
Well, I could certainly just work with Carrie, I think, to disseminate that this is available. I don't know if we've got a list of all of our businesses and their contacts, though.
Is the grant for municipalities only?
No, it is not.
Oh, it's not?
Yeah.
Any other thoughts or questions? Council member Cole?
Go for it. Submit. I have a lot, I have a lot of questions, but let's get the paperwork started.
Okay, well, that, that leads me to ask, well, how many do you want it to submit for?
So, how many do you think we can get? And, and the location, and I guess one of the questions is the 24/7 piece. Is the lot behind the old K&amp;J, is that's no, is that overnight parking permitted or no overnight parking permitted?
I don't think it's overnight parking permitted in any of our lots.
So I don't think there was either. So how does a municipality handle, would we have to change the rules for the EV station?
I guess we'd have to find out the clarity of what does it mean 24-hour parking, that you can go there and park any time, but can you park there for two hours at midnight to 2:00 AM? Or, I don't know if it's just overnight, I'll have to look at that.
Well, the parking lot has to be available to the public 24/7 every day.
They are.
And they are? Okay, then I think that we meet that eligibility requirement.
Perfect.
Yeah. You don't have to be able to park your car there for 24 hours straight. I think we could have some limitations with that, because, plus, you wouldn't want to, because the way the system, at least the existing system, you're charged based on a scale. So if you're there over four hours, then you're gonna get a much higher rate, so you're gonna move your car.
Any other thoughts?
To piggyback on Tim, with this 24-hour requirement, that would eliminate anything on Main Street, correct? With our current 130 parking restriction?
Let's check into that. It's not overnight parking, you could still park there, but I don't know that, can you not park there after a certain time?
I believe everything on Main Street 130 is no parking.
And that's something that's been a bit of a concern of mine for a while, is, you know, eventually, we're gonna have to have them in the downtown area. We have, we put a conduit run throughout the, especially the new construction area for that reason. It's probably getting a, maybe even a survey of the downtown businesses to find out who's gonna be mad about it being there in front of their shop, because now somebody else can't park there that doesn't have EV. And others might be welcoming of it, too. So I think it would be good to outreach to our businesses to see what they think about that as well.
Something that I noticed I didn't include in the presentation is the deadline for this is February 28th, if memory serves. So there's not a ton of time for, for dawdling.
No, my guidance is move, is move the chain and leave, we can work through whatever, we've got, you know, whatever questions we have going forward.
Okay.
Council member Shree. Do you have any thoughts?
No, I'm with Tim on that one.
All righty.
If you don't mind, while we're talking about this, just the newer members, that we are gonna have another EV charging station over in the lot behind the K&amp;J, that new parking lot we just did. That's gonna come through our power agency and that will be a dual-port as well, so that'll be coming.
And then, I think we've talked about this before, that a lot of the car makers are completely getting rid of all of their fuel, gas-powered vehicles and just going electric.
It's my understanding after 2030, like Ford, for example, wasn't gonna make combustible engines anymore. And I don't know if that's strictly for resident customers, or is it, is that for businesses as well that, you know, are hauling stuff? I'm not sure, but I know the smaller vehicles, yes.
I, I don't know that we'll have a choice, but some of the new ones also have the capability that it charges e-bikes as well with a small bike rack behind, so they can do both. If that's an option, I would say we should pursue the option. that's an option, I would say we should pursue the option that can charge both.
Especially if we're connected to the Gateway Trail.
Yeah.
Put one right down there in Rotary Park.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot, and there's permanent restrooms down there in a shelter.
I was thinking of the Veterans Park.
So answering Brandy's question, though, how many do we apply for?
I say go big.
Well, I think I would need a little bit of guidance on where we would want them to be located. So I hear Rotary Park. I didn't hear any concerns with the other two potential spots. Not entirely sure about the downtown, just because of the possible restriction on Seventh Avenue. But that's definitely something to, to take a look at. So if you're willing to grant staff the authority to just take it and run with it, we can do that.
You got my head shaking.
Okay.
I could safely volunteer the electric department to pay for that. I mean, when their grant's picking up 80%, and especially such a small amount, it's, that's a pretty nice deal.
Any last comments before, okay? There isn't any other business, we can adjourn the meeting. Do you have a motion to adjourn our workshop?
A motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Say nay.
Who is ever opposed closing meeting?
I thought she just nayed herself.
I did, too!
The meeting's adjourned at 5:51.